Okay. I'll call this meeting of the Waco ISD Board of Trustees to order. A quorum is present. We have one member tonight remote and three of us are present here in the boardroom. At this time, the board's going to go into closed session pursuant to Texas Open Meetings Act, Section 551.071 and 551.074, consultation with attorney and to discuss personnel. We will be reconvening in open session no earlier than seven for anyone who is here and wants to return at that time. You won't miss anything, I promise. Thank you. The board will reconvene in open session. We have been in closed session where no action was taken. I guess I'm going to have to give everybody's attention. Hello? Excuse me. I don't mind if you talk, but helps to kind of laugh. The board is resuming an open session. We have been in closed session, consultation with attorney and personnel. No action was taken. However, the board does authorize our attorney to take, to negotiate on real property as discussed in closed session and return to the board in the event action is recommended. This is a special business meeting of the Waco ISD Board of Trustees. All items to be discussed or voted upon tonight have been posted as required by state law. I welcome a, warmly welcome, I know we have some guests here tonight, to those who are here in person and also those who are watching on TV. The board's purpose is to set goals, listen to reports of the superintendent, approve budgets, contracts, and personnel appointments, and make policy. We are not here to make management decisions or to solve problems of individuals. Management is the responsibility of the superintendent and her staff. At this time, make sure your phones are turned on silent, and we appreciate those of you who have taken the time to join us and for your interest in Waco ISD. Next on our agenda is public comments on agenda items. Do we have anybody signed up? No, no one signed up. Okay. Next is superintendent's report. Dr. Kinkanen.
Okay. Good evening. I'm going to start with some introductions of some new personnel to Waco ISD, or new to positions, some of them, and I'll start with Haley Dean as the new principal of Hillcrest Professional Development School. And Haley couldn't be with us this evening. She's still on vacation, but I wanted to take the opportunity to make the announcement anyway. Haley began her teaching career in Conroe ISD and then joined Waco ISD in 2009 at Lake Air Intermediate School. She remained with the campus when they transitioned to Lake Air Montessori Magnet School in 2010, where she's been a teacher, a math interventionist, an instructional coach, an assistant principal, and a principal intern. She has a bachelor's degree in interdisciplinary studies from Lamar University and a master's in curriculum and instruction from the University of Texas at Arlington. She has participated in our Rising Leaders Program, which makes this announcement all the more special, and I think she's tuning in this evening, so congratulations to Haley Dean. Next is Lauren Frazier. Would you stand and be recognized? Lauren is another familiar face in Waco ISD and is now serving as the new principal of South Waco Elementary School. She joined Waco ISD in 2012, following a year teaching in Colleen ISD. During her 10 years with us, all at Caesar Chavez Middle School, she has been a teacher, an instructional specialist, a dean of instruction, and assistant principal. She received a bachelor's degree in education from Baylor University and a master's in educational leadership from Lamar University. She is another one of our rising leaders, and we're excited about these opportunities to encourage and grow the next generation of campus administrators from within Waco ISD. Congratulations to Lauren and welcome to her husband.
Would you like to introduce the family that you have with you?
Next is Celeste Sodergren. Did I say that right? Celeste? Sodergren. Sodergren, I'll get that. She is joining us as the new director of Advanced Academics, bringing more than two decades of professional experience. Most recently, she was the Advanced Academics Coordinator for Maynor ISD. Prior to that, she was Maynor's Coordinator of Continuous Improvement and taught for five years in Leander ISD. Before her career in K-12 education, Celeste was an assistant professor at the University of Texas at Austin, a contributor and reviewer for Bedford-St. Martin's, a graduate research and teaching assistant at Texas A&amp;M University, and a teaching fellow at Emerson College in Boston. She holds a bachelor's degree in English literature from East Texas Baptist University, a master's in speech communication from Emerson College, and is currently a doctoral student in the Educational Psychology Program at Baylor University. Welcome.
Welcome. Congratulations.
Glad you're here. Amy Taylor, please stand. Amy Taylor is joining Waco ISD in a new position, Director of Strategic Evaluation Systems and Support. She comes with 26 years of experience in public education. She began her teaching career as a middle school math teacher in Lubbock and Round Rock ISDs before stepping into campus administration, where she was an assistant and associate principal in Round Rock. She then joined Austin ISD as principal of small middle school Green Tech Academy, that's a long name, where she served for seven years. Most recently, she has been the principal of Austin High School for the past six years. She received a bachelor's degree in education from University of the Southwest, a master's degree in educational administration from Texas State University, and is currently pursuing a doctorate in educational leadership from Texas Tech University. Welcome, Amy.
Welcome, Amy.
All right. We're excited to welcome all of those new administrators to Waco ISD. Okay. The next item I have this evening is an update on our ESER funding, and I, as you know, I gave a public hearing on May the 27th to talk about the use of that funding, and at that time, we had only received $33.2 million, or the opportunity to apply for 33.2 of the $49.9 million in ESER III, and we had not received the go-ahead to apply for ESER II, which was $22.1 million. Now, those have all become available to us through an application process, and so I want to give you some information about that this evening. Later, Cheryl Davis will talk a little bit about ESER II and how that funding is going to hold us harmless for attendance and enrollment for last year with COVID. That number's still a bit of a moving target, but we believe about $3 million of those funds will be used to fund Hold Harmless. We have an additional $2.5 million going forward, from what I told you last time, these are additions. We're adding an additional $2.5 million of funding for HVAC replacement, bringing that total to about $5.5 million. Tonight, you'll hear from Dr. Gutierrez on her retention bonus plan that will be presented for your approval. That's about $8.7 million that will all come from ESER funding, which is a significant investment for our teachers and we believe is a really good use of the funding at this time. And then, we've added funding in some other areas to continue the work that we already started, libraries. I mentioned libraries last time. We now have allocated funding to support the addition of a librarian at every campus, with each school having at least a part-time librarian, provided that we can find them. And also, we have added additional funding for books. So, we allocated in ESER III Part I a good amount of money and ended up adding some more for, from ESER II to bring that total to $2.4 million worth of library books that we intend to purchase. And so Jerry's been working with our new librarian coordinator, and you should have an item next week for approval of the first order of those books, and we expect to have those books in place on our campuses first of September. So, they're moving pretty quickly to make that happen. In addition to library books, we've allocated $1.3 million for our elementary classroom teachers and our secondary English language arts teachers to provide $2,000 worth of books to go into their classrooms, so students have classroom libraries in addition to being able to check out books. Those will probably be predominantly paperback books, but research shows you want as many books possible as close to the kids, so we're excited about that. Another million dollars is planned for classroom projectors and a cafeteria, sound system upgrades. Then we have $750,000 for furniture to support academic interventions. We hired academic interventionists, and that causes a need to buy furniture to provide those interventions. And then, in the area of social emotional learning and mental health, we are adding two social workers to serve our students at GL Wiley. And then, we've allocated $820,000 for teacher leadership development activities and $385,000 for administrative leadership development activities. And then finally, there's an allocation of $125,000 to work with the University of Texas School of Design and Creative Technologies, specifically on a camp for our, some of our high school students from all three campuses, to be able to provide an opportunity to engage with them and hear about what they need from our school district. So, that's one I'm particularly excited about and actually had plans to implement that before COVID, had already been in conversation with the University of Texas, and we had to put that one on hold. So, delighted to be able to do that. So, I think we're all really grateful for the additional funding from ESER to support our schools, and I'm really pleased with the plan that my team and I have developed. We want to help our kids, we want to improve our libraries, and we want to be good stewards of the funding that's been provided to us. Okay. The last item I have is on vaccination clinics. So, you all know that our community partners have played a critical role in keeping our students and our employees safe and healthy throughout the pandemic. After the Pfizer vaccine was approved for children 12 years of age or older, we began discussing how to make it easier for our students to get vaccinated. So, once again, thanks to a partnership with Ascension Providence and the Waco McLennan County Public Health District, nearly 100 people, including 55 of our students, were able to receive a first dose of the Pfizer vaccine at a clinic hosted at University High School last month. And we have another clinic coming up tomorrow from 2:00 to 7:00 p.m. It will be in the gym at University High School. Anyone 12 or older can get vaccinated against COVID-19 for free, and other immunizations will also be available for our students who may need to update their immunizations, vaccinations. So, we do encourage people to preregister at covidwaco.com. However, we will, they will take walk-ins, from what I understand. That's all I have.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. It's my understanding, Jared, that your report is a little bit lengthier than MCAD's, and so we're going to slip you guys. Sorry. So, we have a guest here tonight, JoDon Bobbitt from the McLennan County Appraisal District, Chief Appraiser, and you'll approach the mic, and you have the floor. Thank you for coming tonight.
How's it going? Okay. My name is Joe, JoDon Bobbitt. I'm the chief appraiser for McLennan County Appraisal District. I was asked to come and speak regarding exemptions, specifically the homestead free or the exemption, the freeze for over 65. So, on the first slide you see, I have a list of common residential exemptions that are from 2020 for Waco ISD, so this is specifically for Waco ISD. The most common is the homestead. There's 13,874 in Waco ISD out of 40, almost 42,000 total properties. And out of that, a little less than half have an over 65 exemption, so that is a pretty high percentage of over 65 of the total population of homeowners. With the homestead, it is a mandatory $25,000 exemption for school districts. So, anybody, and it goes against your property value, not, not the taxes, so the $25,000 comes off your values. If your, if your property is appraised at $100,000, you only get taxed against 75,000 of that. The requirements, it has to be your primary residence, you have to own the property, you can have no other homestead anywhere in the state or country. Occasionally, we find stuff in other counties or other states. You do have to provide a copy of a valid state identification. There are a few exceptions, but those are very few. Deadline is April 30th. It's a very fluid deadline. You have a two-year window after the fact, so we can apply that. If you miss the deadline, we can retroactively apply the homestead and the over 65 exemption. With over 65 or disabled persons exemption, it's an additional $10,000 exemption, and there is a tax ceiling. A lot of people call it the freeze. It doesn't actually freeze your taxes, it becomes a ceiling, so if the tax rates and the tax values, the appraised values go down, your taxes could actually go below your ceiling. The requirements is the same as the, as the homestead, except that you must be over 65, and it applies anywhere in the year. So, if you turn 65 on December 31st, you get it for the entire year. And on your homestead application, if you give us your, or whoever that's older, between you and your spouse, whoever's older, if you give us their birth date, we will automatically apply it. So, if you apply in, say, for the current year, and 10 years from now you turn 65, we'll automatically apply that. We don't make you reapply. For disability, you do have to be eligible through Social Security, and so there are, there is some paperwork that we require you to provide to us that proves that. And you may not receive an over 65 and a disability exemption at the same time, especially for one entity. Some people, you know, a lot of people come in and say, "I'm over 65 and I'm disabled, I should have both," but the law does not allow that. On the tax ceiling freeze, it is specifically for school districts. It is optional for other entities, but typically, I believe the City of Mark is the only one that has adopted a freeze. Most, like the county has adopted an exemption amount, but not a freeze. But the tax ceiling, it, as long as your value goes up or the tax rates go up, it won't affect what you actually pay to the school. It may affect the city and the county, that's, they're not frozen, so your taxes may still go up, but not to the school district. And so, bond elections, rates, appraised values, those are not affected, the ceiling. And like I said, if the rates do go down or the value does go down, your, what you're actually paying taxes will go down also, or could. There is a, if you make an addition to your house, if you add on, if you change, add a garage, if you add on new, new construction, that will add on to the freeze. So, if your freeze is $1,500 to the school and you add on the price of a new garage, whatever amount of tax that's attributed to that garage would then just get added to your freeze, and that becomes your new freeze. So, it doesn't completely reset the freeze, it just adds the new value to it. You can have a tax ceiling transferred from another county, or if you move from someplace, so you can take that benefit with you. I have a copy of our appraisal notice, so for the taxpayers, it is on our appraisal notice, so you can find if we are applying it currently. It's listed in abbreviation, abbreviated, so it will say HS for homestead, OV 65 for an over 65 exemption, or DP for disabled person. And on our website, it'll show your exemptions also, but we're restricted by law from putting over 65 on the website. They're afraid of people taking advantage of the elderly, so it'll say elderly or other. And I'm not sure if it shows disabled person, but it won't list that specifically if you're over 65. On the homestead application, there's not a lot that we actually need filled out on it. You have to put that you want the homestead, and if you qualify for disabled or over 65, there's some disabled veteran exemptions also. And then if you're moving from someplace else that had an exemption, we need to know where that came from, to make sure you're not still receiving that, that homestead exemption at the previous county. We do want to know when you acquired the property and when you started to reside in the property, and then you have to sign it. Beyond that, there are a lot of other things you can fill out on there, but they typically do not apply to everybody or for most people. And if you have any questions, taxpayers are more than welcome to call our office, and we can walk anybody through it fairly quickly. A new exemption, the homestead has now been expanded to inherited home, so typically in each Waco, we'll see this more often, where somebody will pass away and then their heirs will inherit the property, but there is no deed or it's not probated, and so this is no way that people can get the homestead, having gone through the full legal process to acquire ownership. And so if there are multiple owners, multiple heirs that live in the property, they just basically need to file an affidavit with us and state that they live there, bring us a copy of the death certificate and our utility bill for the property, and then they're eligible for the homestead. So, it tries to give a path for, for a homestead exemption, when normal means aren't always applicable. There is also a website that I put on there, www.texasbar.com, and they provide free legal service to anybody that has issues with this and needs help getting the paperwork filed. But that's fairly new. I believe that was passed in 2019. If you all have any questions? I've gone through it pretty quick.
Does any member of the board have a question? And I, and I would be remiss if I didn't remind everyone that Mr. Sykes has been our representative on MCAD for, how long?
Many years.
For many years, and we appreciate your volunteer, volunteer service. You have represented us well. Do you have a question?
Yes, Madam President. JoDon, for clarification purposes, good detail on the homestead exemption application marking the general residence exemption. If a family or person was not aged 65 at the time the exemption was applied for, when they turned 65, just for clarification, do they need to amend this or fill out a new homestead application?
Not if we have their birth date on file.
If they didn't, I guess, is what I'm saying.
If, if one spouse is significantly older or younger than the other one, and the person that signed the application gave us their birth date, we may not have the older spouse's birthday on file.
Okay.
And so, we could miss one. So, if they don't see that, they just need to let us know, and we can, we'll apply the cost.
In the absence of a birthday, what's the mechanism they would use to get that over 65? Another application?
Yes, sir. They need to reapply.
Okay.
If, if the person that we have on file that signed it is not the one that's over 65, we probably wouldn't ask for an updated application.
Right. Right. Okay. Very good. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Does anybody else have any questions? Mr. Bobbitt? No? Ms. Quarterwick? Okay.
Sorry. No, I didn't have any questions.
Okay. And just while you're listening, you, you may have to interrupt me if I don't notice you, because you're really small up there. Thank you so much for coming and providing this information to us. Very helpful. And it was a pleasure to meet you.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you all.
Yeah. Thank you.
Appreciate your time.
All right. Mr. Sturzinger. Thank you for joining us. Review and discuss long-range facilities planning.
Well, good evening, Board of Trustees. Dr. Kinkanen, thank you for having us here. I can be as brief as you need me to be tonight, but I figure I'll go through the whole spiel if you'd like. So, tonight, we're looking at the long-range plan and moving into phasing of those projects. Tonight, I have myself, as well as Amy Jones, and on behalf of the O'Connell-Roberts team, we're excited to be here in this transition as we move from really, from the facility master plan process, we really looked at that long-term vision and moving into that bond planning process, and talking about taking that initial or that first step in executing the facility master plan. It becomes that opportunity then to formulate a bond program, be able to work with the Board of Trustees to call that bond, and ultimately start seeing those projects that were discussed become reality in the built environment. And that's a little bit about what we'll talk about here tonight. As a reminder, the facilities master plan was the process to really engage the community of stakeholders, engage Waco ISD, in setting that long-term vision. So, it really was a process to set that mile marker out in the distance, to be able then in turn to understand what's that right first step to be able to take. We looked at the facility condition assessment, educational suitability. We gained a lot of input from the community, from the stakeholders, from yourselves as well. And ultimately, really found, identified three guiding principles or tenets to be able to focus future facilities on within the district. And that was really about creating academic facilities around Waco ISD's vision for academic excellence, about creating equity across facilities and programs, and maintaining the community and stakeholder investment, all the great things that have occurred over the years. How do we continue to maintain and protect that here over the future? From these tenets, we really use these as lenses for consideration in terms of projects and identifying priorities, as well as creating vision and strategy for that future, that long-range plan. Here you'll see on the screen some of the priority projects that were identified by the community, overwhelming support from the community on Waco High School, Carver, Indian Springs, Tennyson, Kendrick, Alta Vista, and South Waco. And so, as we move into that bond planning process and really that initial phase, those will really form the basis of what we're here to talk about tonight. But again, that's based on the support that we've seen from the community in moving forward with the facility master plan. These five projects really, as a reminder, set that immediate priority of what the group would like to move forward initially, but reminder of there's always a long-term vision, there's always more to accomplish, and so we really need to start understanding how do we prioritize, how do we move these projects forward against other projects as well. And so, we were able to get input from the community committee on what the priorities were. So, at the top, you see the priority, the priority level of those four main projects, starting with the high school was the absolute top first choice for implementation first, then working through Carver and Indian Springs, followed by Tennyson, and then finally rounding out with the elementary schools of Alta Vista, Kendrick, and South Waco from there. Really started helping give us input to be able to provide back to the Board of Trustees for the communication. As well as there, you see then the bond funding, as we had a financial capacity presentation, which the Board of Trustees saw as well. And you'll see that 95% of the respondents were looking to support, would recommend the Board of Trustees consider $300 to $375 million to be able to support the bond program moving forward. And that really cast the vision of the facility master plan. I'm going to pause there one second, because that was about a year's worth of effort and squeezed in about three months, and I know that we've had the opportunity, or three minutes. I've had the opportunity to present that to you before, but want to make sure you don't have questions before we move on to next steps in the process.
Thank you. Anybody have any questions from Mr. Sturzinger?
So then, of course, what's next? And that's as the Board of Trustees are considering a bond program, there's really several things to consider along with the facility master plan, the priorities that were identified, and it's really about what's actually in the bond package, what are the projects and priorities that would occur within that? How do we implement these projects? What does that look like over the next several years? Financial capacity, and ultimately referendum language that would go into calling a bond. Some of those that you've already seen, like financial capacity, some we're going to talk about tonight, and some you will see here over the coming month as we work towards the magic August 12th date that you hear about. So, next, what you're going to see is we've started looking at the bond implementation of those five projects. We've kept those as the priorities and how those can move forward. So, our team at O'Connell-Roberts have developed a couple bond option schedules, and there's some consideration with those. But all of them really focus in around three main things. First is a November of 2020 bond. You'll see that on the schedule. We worked through a process of pool planning, starting with the end in mind, ultimately knowing that we want a new school to open in August that may be That may be in different years, but start at that date and then work backwards to understand when we need to start the design process. And then ultimately, we're giving appropriate durations, and you'll see that for design, permitting, and construction, knowing that those are the three main phases of the project as we move forward. So the first schedule, and you'll, really the important part of this is less about the words and it's more about the colors and the years that are across the top. But these are the five projects. So starting at the top is Waco High School, then it's moving into Carver, Indian Springs, followed by that is South Waco, Tennyson, and then Alta Vista and Kendrick schools. And you'll see each one has then the three phases of design, permitting, and construction. And a few highlights of what we're calling Option H Schedule. You'll see that that also relates to the costs associated there. But at Waco High School, here, this design process is showing to have started, and that was based on the reimbursement resolution the board passed, I believe it was March or April of this year. So we're underway during that process. And ultimately, we're targeting an August of '22 construction start date is what we're planning on. And that's based on the three way agreement between McLennan County, City of Waco, and Waco ISD, and when some of the land will be available. So you'll start hearing and seeing more design and information about that project here over the coming months. As well, the other things that you'll see in there is the blue bar then represents construction. So from that August date, there are three major milestones that you'll see. First is in the summer of 2024, you'll see a light blue block, and that represents the what we're anticipating is the completion of what we're calling Phase One. And that would be the first time that students would have the opportunity to be within a new facility. Then again, in summer of 2025, that would be the second phase that would open up to be able to new facilities. And then ultimately rounding out the completion of the project, we're anticipating the end of 2025 going through there. And again, that's based on the industry expectation of how long construction would take, working through three and a half year process of designing construction. So big facility, big timeline on that one. As we move down, what we've done with the remaining four projects is then pair the projects together. So in Schedule A, what you'll see is a middle school and an elementary school are tied together, and then the other middle school, other elementary school are tied together. So here at Carver and Indian Springs, you'll see that there's a single phase as we're shifting students or planning to shift students to Indian Springs, allowing the free construction on the Carver site to be able to construct that facility. At South Waco Elementary School, we're looking at a phased summer additions and renovations over a summer to summer timeframe on that one. Tennyson, you'll see that the duration, the blue bar for construction on that one is a little bit longer. We know that we're anticipating that we're constructing on an active campus there. We'll require a little bit more phasing to be able to work on that site, so we're giving a little bit extra time on that one. And then finally, Alta Vista and Kendrick is following what I would call is the typical process for an elementary school as we look at that construction. We won't have as many constraints as Tennyson would from there. But ultimately, the idea is that design process is started for Waco High School and ultimately would target everything being completed by 2025 for the entirety of the bond program for those five projects. Any questions on A before we move on to B?
Madam President?
Yes, sir.
Jared, just a general question. With a bond this size and with the magnitude, scope of the projects that we're looking at and the timeline that we're reviewing, is there a typical number of construction contractors you would see bidding on a series of projects like we have? And I'm worried about capacity. I'm worried about, you know, the bond, not the bond capacity, but the construction capacity. And these are staggered nicely, but I just don't know if there's a typical number of construction companies that would be interested in handling them all or be selective in terms of high school versus middle school, so on and so forth.
So is there a typical number? No. And then on, it depends as well on how you bid the project. So you'll see a little bit of different response if you're CEM at Risk versus CSP, and that will also then depend upon the size and complexity of the project. So generally, I'd say the larger and more complex the project, you usually see CEM at Risk. There's usually, I would say, five to 10 qualified contractors that you would see bid during that process. CSP, usually those are in the smaller kind of greenfield site projects. There, because it's. CSP is bid day. It'd be four to eight is usually what you would see actually submit at that time, and that would be basically on their work and availability.
Let me drill down one, one level further. With these, with the stagger and these projects, would you expect to see one contractor across these four major projects if they were like construction manager at risk? I mean, they would have equipment on site, et cetera, et cetera, for longevity type things.
We've seen it both ways. So the district, there's advantage to having one contractor, one point of responsibility to conduct all the work. You get familiar with the business. And then in turn, if you're identifying to spread the wealth. So there may be a project, I'll say like South Waco or the Kendrick, that they're smaller, that you want to be able to offer that opportunity to the local contractors, and that's some of the balance that you'll see. I'll say right now for the bid that's open for the CEM at Risk, we're hearing a lot of chatter from Austin and Dallas from those contractors, as well as some of the locals have actually reached out as well on partnerships. So I mean, getting good participation across the board.
Good. Okay, thank you.
Theoretically, theoretically, there could be a different contractor for every single project.
That's correct. Okay, so Option B.
An extreme, right?
Sometimes all in one is nice. So in Option B, so Option A again is really focused on, you're exactly right, is, and we'll talk a little bit about inflation escalation here in a second, is that we've spread out the projects and it's ultimately trying to balance, I'll say, the district's ability to respond, architect's ability to respond, and contractor's ability to respond. Everybody would love to have it all at one time, but ultimately, in this construction marketplace, there's just not availability across the board to be able to support that level of projects. So we know that that allows us to phase that out, allows to work within the sale of the bonds, because we're currently looking at multiple sales from a financial standpoint and are ultimately working within those constraints. So Option A does spread it out. Again, it pairs the middle school and elementary school together year over year. Option B then focuses on the same, it has the same principles in how we've developed the schedule. The shift here is that then it pairs the two middle schools and it pairs the two elementary schools together. And this creates the opportunity of your middle schools or your larger projects, and just by the law of compounding interest, it pushes those further, or pushes them sooner, and therefore you'll accrue less inflation and escalation. And you'll see that here in a bottom line, and that's one of the tenets. There's some challenges with that. We'll talk a little bit about the pros and cons on that one. But to give you a frame of reference, if you take the two middle schools and you add their square footage together, that's 266,000 square feet. And if you pair the two elementary schools together, it's 152,000 square feet. So we're talking, it's not a minor difference. There's quite a lot of difference between the two facilities in terms of scale and scope and project. Same assumptions and basically just slid the timeframe. So all the projects have the same durations for design and construction, but you'll notice, for example, Tennyson, we're pushing up to a January design start date to be able to facilitate that schedule, starting January of '22, ultimately working through that 18 to 19 months of construction. So again, provides that opportunity, provides a different inflection, and you see this in the actual prices. So on the next slide, you'll see that we've started identifying the individual costs that are on the screen. So on Bond Program A, this is what we've been working on and communicating, where each project is identified individually, but the total is $376.1 million in the Bond Program A. And then as you look at Bond Program B, you'll see that the only, the two darker numbers that are there, which are for South Waco and Tennyson, are for, those are the only two numbers that change between those two boxes. So then we're looking at the $372.9 million cost. So ultimately, that decision, you know, ends up being a $4 million, $3 million, $3.2 million choice from that side. So ultimately, what are those pros and cons and impacts between A and B is, as you look at Option B, you would be considering potentially affecting three of the four middle schools within the district all at one time. It becomes very impactful from that side. So not only in terms of the scale of the projects, but in terms of impact to the district, it could be impactful knowing that you're adjusting three all at once. We talked a little bit about inflation and currently within the bond program, we are including 12% this year and the two following years based on our understanding of the marketplace right now. We're thankfully hearing the price of lumber start coming down. We'll see what happens here over the next six months as well, but we're estimating conservative to make sure that there's enough money within the bond program to be able to support it. But that's really what's creating the difference between A and B is about how you inflate those.
So that's already factored into these numbers here?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Yep. And then we talked about it a little bit, but ultimately what I'm calling project management support, being able to support the projects, and that's really why they're graded, gradated out. But the replacement projects will be complicated projects. Ultimately, want to spread that effort out across time. And then finally, the thought process of working through furnishing, equipping, and opening the school or schools in that case is that basically every year for the next, take one year off, and then every year we'll start working on opening schools or phases of schools within that design process. So very impactful on that side. Before we transition to next steps, we'll again pause here and see if there are any additional questions.
Does anybody have any additional questions? Okay, carry on.
Okay. So then, of course, following up again on what's next, and it really ultimately becomes the challenge set before the Board of Trustees to really carefully consider all the information that's been presented to date from the facility master plan, educational suitability, all the way today about the considerations, really focused on bond packaging and project implementation. You've heard the opportunity for financial capacity, and pretty soon the bond referendum language will come in there about aligning the legal language requirements of Texas, then with the bonding amount, and ultimately working towards that date on August 12th, where the Board has the opportunity to call a bond if they so choose. And with, that's really the next step. We're here to support any questions that you have about the projects or the process and welcome the opportunity.
Okay, thank you so much. Thanks for summarizing where we've been. A lot of work, yeah. A lot of work to get to this point. So does anybody have any questions for Jared? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yeah, maybe, we may have some questions.
Later.
So don't leave quite yet.
Okay. I'll leave Amy to it.
And I see Amy Jones. Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Okay. Next item on our agenda is to review and discuss potential bond election.
Dr. Kim Cannon. So this item is just building on what Jared laid out in terms of the potential bond program. And so I just want to remind everyone where we've been since February of 2020. We've been thinking about our master planning process, and you can see on the memo there all of the steps that we've taken to date, from working through facilities conditions assessment, suitability assessments, visioning, forming our community engagement process with our community advisory committee, working through that process, and then all the way up to the development of the facilities master plan, which you guys have reviewed. We've looked at preliminary tax values. You've looked at some options for bond phasing. We've talked about tax exemptions and debt capacity as well previously. So as I see it, the next steps then would be to review the bond tax impact with our updated preliminary certified tax values. We don't expect to have those values officially by next week when we meet again, but we have some preliminary values that we expect to get prior to the 22nd from the Tax Appraisal District. So we will run those numbers and present that to you. And I suppose we could run that two ways. If you're interested in the bond phasing Option B that would save some money at $372.3 million versus $376.1, or we could run it both ways. Then when we come back on August 12th, we'll review those final certified values and the bond tax impact and consider the order of election for the bond election at that meeting. That would be a special meeting. And I would anticipate that I would make that recommendation based on the work of the community advisory committee and the plan that has been developed, I think, really addresses our facility's needs. It begins to address our facility needs. I would remind everyone that this doesn't address all of our facility needs. We have a number of needs, elementary, middle, and high school, but this begins to address those needs. It particularly addresses equity between the two high schools, equity between our middle schools, and then, and really does a nice job of shoring up our secondary campuses so that they're all pretty equitable. And then it just begins to work on elementary schools, and we would have a long way to go on that. But this would, would really benefit the school district and the goals set forth by the community advisory committee. So with that, I'd love to hear your thoughts.
So, Jared, maybe, could you, or could you address the, maybe I didn't hear, the criteria of A versus B? I know the timelines vary, but maybe what's driving those timelines? In other words, some schools are coming on stream earlier than A, so there's some trade offs there. So I'm just not sure what, what the criteria was exactly that you were considering in A and B for those whatever, $4 million or so difference.
So I'd start with the initial item that we already discussed about trying to spread out the work of ultimately that we're trying to not design it all, construct it all, open it all on the same timeline. So ultimately, we're looking at phasing that out. So as we look at A, it was really about how do we pair this together and make the impact? And so ultimately, what we were looking at was the priorities identified by the community and trying to lay those out aligned with the priorities of the community of, in essence, the higher priority, the sooner it comes online first as much as possible. So the inflection of that would be is that then, in this case, South Waco would occur sooner out of that, just to be with the ability to move it sooner. And then Option B directly aligns with the priorities, and it's also the opportunity to save funds in terms of escalation potential incurred cost. The concern though, and that's really what we're warning against is size and scale of the project and making those happen from a design and construction and opening standpoint is although it's a good opportunity, there are also some challenges that the district would need to evaluate here in terms of the effort.
I just didn't know if a driver was the earlier opening is more advantageous to the district or, okay.
It really focused around, I'll say prioritization as well as dollars. The other opportunity is that you could, well, predominantly in Option A, you could flip, I'll say, middle schools and elementary schools in that priority that the district would have the opportunity to do as well, but that would not affect dollars at the end of the day. Well, it would some, because South Waco would be, could be deferred later, but.
Right.
You might have said this, but also thinking about the ability to get the work done with contractors, subcontractors too, so.
Correct.
Trying to balance the load a little bit for subs, but we, you know, we, we looked at the bigger projects being done at the same time and saw there's an opportunity for some savings there too, so just a trade off.
Yeah, okay. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Anybody else? So next week, we will look at our preliminary tax value data?
That's correct. So we will look at with preliminary updated certified. They're not certified yet. Preliminary updated, that tax values. I think, I think it's, I think it's getting us closer, but we won't have, until the 23rd, we won't have actual certified values. But we're gonna, I think it will be a little bit closer to what tax impact might actually be. And then if you want us to run that two ways, so you could see that with Phase B, Option B, we can do that, or if you want us to stick with the three. B, we can do that, or if you want us to stick with the $376.1, we can do that as well.
Well, I guess, I'm sorry, Jared, another question. Do you have a recommendation for option A over B? You do recommend A?
Just in terms of that balance?
Because of the balance of the schedule. So the $4 million possible savings would not be worth the complications of the schedule. Okay, okay, good, thank you. Thank you for that. So, so yes, I. I think it would be appropriate to run with both numbers to see what the difference would be, but keeping in mind the architect's recommendation for option A.
A question.
Yes, sir, Mr. Gillery.
Can we also look at the numbers during Waco High, as well as just Carver? Can we also look at that in those numbers?
Say that again, I don't quite.
Waco High and Carver, instead of looking at the five schools, look at those two schools and tax impact and things like that. Can we examine that?
So have the option of have another, another option of just Waco High and Carver on the ballot and not have Tennyson or the elementary?
See what that would look like.
And see what the impact of tax with that, okay?
Just to give, just to give people, you know, options and choices.
Well, in that regard, probably options. All the options need to be run then, huh?
Well, there would be multiple options, so you want the tax impact of each project? Or do you want, you want different packages?
So I'm looking at the 200, the $250 million package that you have on here, and then also the one that we've been discussing. I want to see what those numbers look like.
I don't know what the 250 package would be.
Well, $250, $50 million right here says 4.87 monthly for the taxpayer. That's what I was looking at on the chart here. So I'm looking at just those two particular schools, looking at Waco High and also Carver. I want to look at the tax impact.
Okay, Mr. Stersinger, could you come back to the mic so everybody can hear? So I don't think there is a $250 million option. I think the.
So I believe what Mr. Gillery is looking at is the chart, the voting chart?
Yes.
Right, but that's not the, that's not the total bond package amount. The bond packages are the numbers that we've been looking at previously, and I don't know if you have that slide up.
Is that something that we can, is that something we can look at?
Madam President?
Yep, that one right there. So right now, the choice is, there's not an opportunity, if these are the five projects, to, I'll say, bring the cost down. Now, again, I would say that these are the total potential costs. There is contingency built in this. There usually is savings at the end of the, at the end of the day, so we would not anticipate to spend every dollar, but we can only go to ask the taxpayers once from that standpoint. So the numbers right now would be 372 or 376 for the five projects.
In addition, we're at, Madam President?
Yes, sir, please.
We're at a 95% confidence level, if you will, as far as respondents go, supporting a 300 to $375 million bond. That's, that's an overwhelming statement by the community, which echoed the advisory committee in terms of their support, their recommendations, and the priorities that we have established. So you're, that's where we are right now. This is 95% of respondents recommend the Board of Trustees.
They're not.
So that's what I'm seeking some clarification on to make sure that we get the information that we want. So these numbers are construction costs, but they're not, but they're not the total bond cost.
No, they're.
So, will you clarify, please? Because these numbers, you have a construction cost for Waco High School plus the construction cost for one of the two middle schools, which would be approximately $250 million, but that's not, that would not be the cost of your bond. Your bond would still be 325, 350, just for clarification's sake, because I think there's some confusion with using construction cost. Thank you.
So right now, the numbers that are on the screen are what we reference our total project cost, and that's the cost, that's soft and hard cost. It's everything that you would need to design, construct, furnish the school. So the construction cost is part of that. So 372 or 376 represents the total bond amount choosing based on the choice of schedule.
I'm still confused about the numbers.
I think we're looking at two different things. So the cost of Waco High School is $156.8, the cost of Carver is 77. So I think Mr. Gillery is asking, could we just look at those two projects? And that doesn't total 200 million, that totals about 234 million. And so then on the bottom on those priorities where we asked the advisory committee what they would support, I think you targeted that 200 million.
That's what I was.
Okay, okay.
So I think that you're just asking for those two projects only.
That's all.
Okay.
Is it a way?
Excuse me, Mr. Davis. And those numbers would be the same whether either middle school, the numbers for each middle school are the same, so high school plus a middle school would be the same number?
As long as they're implemented on that schedule.
On that same schedule, okay. Mr. Davis?
I was just going to see if we could get all the, yeah, I think it's, if we can get all the values for all the schools individually, so then that way, whatever combination we would like to see, we would be able to see it. That's my question.
Does that work? Can we do that?
So right now, what you see on the screen there with the bond program A and B and the individual numbers, the total, and I'll just run through bond program A, the total bond in that case would be $376.1 million. Waco High School would constitute $156.9 million. Carver Indian Springs would be 77.5, 24.3 for South Waco, 82.1 million for Tennyson, and 35.4 for Alta Vista. So if you total those five numbers up, that represents 376, so that's the individual numbers.
Okay, so then the question is, can, can we get the tax impact of each project alone individually?
We, we've given big chunks of tax impact, so what would 100 million look like? What would 150 million look like? So you could really do the math. If you looked, looked back at those charts, you could see that if you want us to lay it out, we can. I don't know, Cheryl, I'm looking at you, how hard that is just to show each single one.
At the bottom of this, I know it's tiny, those tax impacts are listed.
Oh, they are, okay. Jared, why don't you read those to us then?
The one thing I would caution is, these are not certified values that we're going to have, so it's not going to be necessarily the final numbers. We're also not going to issue debt next year, and depending on how much we issue, it'll be in multiple issues typically. So yes, the answer is we can do the tax rate impact based on these preliminary values of what each project would be.
Mr. Sykes.
We'd still be looking at these levels, though, that are on page 10.
Well, that's my question. Does the Board want more detail than the, the levels and tax impact that's on page 10 of the presentation?
And so that's showing $250 million is a 4.97 rate increase.
So is the information that we have good? We just need the updated numbers from the appraisal district? Or is there still something?
Are there still going to be preliminary?
I know they're going to be preliminary, but I just want some, for clarification's sake, can the administration work on this slide number 10 to get us good, better numbers? Would that help? Yeah, I think so. Mr. Davis, is that, if we work on slide, if the administration works on slide 10 to update these numbers? Is that helpful? Okay.
Yes, I think.
Okay, good, thank you.
We can just get slide 10 updated with the preliminary.
So update, update slide 10, Ms. Davis, yeah.
Preliminary update, okay.
Yeah, thank you. And thank you, because I had this slide in my head and those other ones, very confused. Okay. All right, any other questions? I think we're done. Thank you.
President, people?
Ms. Corwin, do you have a question?
I think I have more of a statement.
Okay.
I, sorry, yeah, just looking kind of at our Community Advisory Committee and the time input that they had, the scope, I guess, of perspectives, levels of influence. I mean, I just think, you know, we had a fairly diverse group. I really do want to honor their time and their opinions. You know, I think looking, you know, I know we can, I appreciate the updated with the new valuations, but I think that's going to be really helpful. And I also appreciate the coming in and telling us more about the, what was it called? The tax, I have it here, sorry, kind of homestead exemptions and the exemptions that taxpayers could get. And so I appreciate that, because I think that information is so helpful for our community. But I, you know, I know we're moving forward, but I just, I would love to, I guess, just keep in mind that people have given a lot of time and thought. And, you know, when we look at the preliminary polls, kind of what this Community Advisory Committee has, has kind of said that they would prefer, I think, is also an important kind of aspect to kind of keep in mind as we move forward. But I really do appreciate this administration and all that they're doing to give us the information so that we can really make a informed decision. Okay, so thank you. Thank you for all of those work.
Thank you. Yes, Mr. Davis?
So option A is the, the timeline for it is in agreeance with what the committee wanted, right? Option A is with what the committee decided, or how did we come up with that timeline?
I would say that, that both options honor the committee's timeline of prioritizing Waco High first, and then working through the middle schools and elementary schools. And option A, we're taking the opportunity to expedite one of the elementary schools because it'll fit within, I'll say, the first summer to be able to work through that timeline, so.
Okay, were there other questions? Are y'all, y'all work out what information you? Okay. We could make him sit down one more time and then ask him a question and come back.
He might run out the door.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Stersinger.
Thank you.
So at our meeting next week, the administration will bring back to the Board updated numbers to those different, or possible bond amounts from, that are on slide 10.
Yes.
Okay.
And also the, the additional 372.3.
Oh, from 37, yes.
We'll make, we'll make sure you have all the options you need.
Okay, thank you. Dr. Gutierrez, review and discuss 21, 22 compensation plan.
Good evening, Madam President and members of the Board. It's my pleasure to be here with you tonight to talk to you about the proposed 2021, 2022 compensation plan. I have a presentation. Will the clicker work? Okay. Okay, here it is. Okay. If you recall, back in June, TASB presented to you their maintenance findings from the study. They made six recommendations, and so I'm here to share with you our response to those recommendations. I'll only focus on four of those recommendations because the other recommendations, five and six, are more ongoing work that will continue. So before I dive in, I want to talk to you a little bit about just highlighting some of the importance of the, of a competitive compensation plan. You know, times are very different right now, and we're, we're feeling that with trying to find teachers, trying to find cafeteria workers and auxiliary, other auxiliary staff. But we know that competitive compensation plans help us retain our, our staff. We also know that when our staff feel valued, their satisfaction rates are higher and their productivity is improved. And we also know that gives us that competitive edge for recruitment, because we're in a real unique situation here in Waco, which, Waco is wonderful because it's a wonderful city of its own, but it also sits in between two other cities that give people access to go either towards the Austin direction or towards the DFW direction. So we definitely need to keep that in mind. And we also want to pay people for the work they do. And, and it's really, you know, prices are going up, and, and we just really need to show our staff that we value them. We have a number of strategies that we're already putting in place that you're very well aware of. You know, we're doing the career pathways for our teachers and teacher leadership work, and you'll see that in the stipend, stipends that I present to you tonight. We also have the teacher incentive allotment, and that's giving teachers the opportunity to earn more money. We're also doing things like the, improving the orientation for teachers and all staff. We continue to improve that. Our new teacher support was transformed last year, and we continue to refine that process. And we're also going to continue to focus on working conditions, and this year, one of the things we're doing differently is beyond the exit interviews that we do with staff, we are doing exit empathy interviews. So my staff and I are personally calling employees. And I know it's a busy time in HR, but we hope to finish those next week to really listen to those that left and find out why they left beyond the exit interviews. So as I mentioned to you, we're going to look at, at four of the recommendations. One of them is around just really implementing the pay structure that was recommended by TASB to make us competitive with the market. The second one, in, in the presentation, they gave you a 1%, 2%, and 3% increase. And so we're going to talk about that and how we hope to respond to that upon your approval. And we're also looking at market differences, because we're really trying to ensure equity across our employees, their pay. And last but not least, we really want to target those, those stipends that we're going to present to you tonight, where we're going to propose some changes to those. So first, let's dive into recommendation one. This is really around looking at all of our pay plans, our teacher pay plan, auxiliary, the administrator professional pay plan, and our paraprofessional pay plan. And we're hoping to just provide stronger starting salaries, having midpoints that are aligned with market values, and, and also aligning pay within that structure. We also made some minimal changes to the temporary pay. We added the baseball pitch counter, so we know there was a need for that, and so we included that, so just a minor change there. And substitutes. So districts around us are, they pay substitutes for long-term sub jobs, and we had it at, on the 21st day, they would get paid long-term pay. We're changing it to 11, because that's what most districts around us are doing now, so we want to remain competitive with that. And we know substitutes are very hard to get, so we don't want them to choose long-term jobs in other districts, because they'll pay more sooner. Then we have, so here's, in recommendation two, we're proposing that we go for the 3% pay increase across the board, and that would finally get us over $50,000 for our teachers. And so that would put a starting teacher pay at $50,250. And with this, you could see there in the, on the right, well, it's my right, the cost of each of those. So overall, including the market adjustments, this would cost $3.7 million. And the one thing I also want to say about the teachers, in steps 15 through 25 that TASB noticed, and we had also already noticed that some of the districts were paying more for teachers with experience, so we, so some of those teachers, well, those teachers in the 15 to 25 range are going to see more than the $1,600 pay increase if we go with a 3% GPI. All right. Recommendation three, this is really around equity, making those equity adjustments. So with this, we, we're going to make the standard equity adjustment. So with this, we, we're going to make the standard equity adjustments as recommended by TASB. And this includes the adjustments to the pay scale that I just mentioned to you with the years 15 to 25. It includes adjusting all the pay scales for employees who currently work with us who aren't 1% above the midpoint that, I'm sorry, above the, yeah, above the midpoint. And that just allows for new people not to come in getting paid less than our current employees. And then it also accounts for compression because we know we had compression in some areas. So we want to make those adjustments. But in addition to what TASB recommended, we've also heard from our employees and we've looked at the, at the pay and we knew that it was critical to, to do some equity adjustments for our campus instructional specialists, our assistant principals, our cafeteria workers, including cafeteria managers and our custodial staff. And we even discussed that with TASB because, again, we were hearing from our employees. And when that was researched, that was accurate. So additional equity adjustments were, are recommended there too and are being made upon your approval. And in the last recommendation, this is where the stipends come in. I'm not going to go over all the stipends. You have all of this in your packet and the ones that are changing are highlighted there for you. But I do want you to know that we met with our fine arts director. So these decisions weren't made in isolation, met with my colleague over here, Mr. Love, when it came to the athletic stipends and really got their input around this. So most of the recommendations were accepted. There were times when we increased it a little bit more to have equity across all the sports. And then there were times when we didn't increase it as much. And some of those decisions were made based on the size of our program, based on the roles and responsibilities that are involved with that stipend. So these were very thoughtful decisions, again, that were made with the directors who oversee these programs. So with the athletic stipends, just want to highlight a few things. Like I mentioned, some of them, we did equity across all sports. We really made a big change in middle school. Middle school was being paid for, like, by two sports, three sports, instead of paying them by sports. And in conversations with TASB, we broke it down by sports. And that's really going to benefit the coaches who do the different sports because now they'll get paid for the sport that they are coaching, like all the other coaches who would coach that sport, instead of just getting paid by two sports, three sports, and then four sports. So they were getting paid less by grouping them by sports. And then any, we decreased very few, but any that we decreased, we will hold harmless. So anyone who is coaching will not see a decrease in their stipend. This is for new coaches who are onboarded to coach these sports that decreased. And the proposed new stipends are mostly, mostly teacher leadership stipends. And we know that teacher retention, one of the top three reasons that teachers will leave is that they don't have a voice and they don't have opportunities for leadership. So we're really working on that teacher leadership. So you'll see here the opportunity culture, teacher leadership stipends. You'll also see the reading recovery stipends. And then we're also adding very small stipends, but it's something for going above and beyond. These are grade level stipends and department chair stipends. And again, this is just honoring that extra work that our teachers do when they take on leadership roles on top of their very hard job. So that's the end of this presentation. I'd like to open it up for questions.
Thank you. Anybody have any questions? Mr. Sykes?
Dr. Gutierrez, thank you for your presentation. I, I just want to, mine's more of a comment than a question. I can't think of a better time to bring forward these recommendations for the employees of the district that have gone through what not only Waco and Waco ISD, but other parts of Texas and the country have gone through. I think it's very appropriate to cover all of the areas that you have done. And in my estimation, the time I've been involved, this is one of the most comprehensive I've seen in terms of addressing the needs across the district. So I just want to say I appreciate your timeliness on this, the depth of the analysis you've done, analysis that you've done. And I think it's very, very deserved and very timely that we're bringing this forward on behalf of the employees of WISD. So thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your support.
Okay, thank you very much. Very comprehensive thorough report and it did a lot of work to make sure that we are meeting the needs of our employees and doing our best to keep our teachers and recruit new ones.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
And the other thing, Madam President, the other thing to follow is the, you know, discussion on health benefits and how that, how that impacts the package also for the total compensation package for our employees.
Yes, we will bring that next week and have more details for you in August.
We'll look forward to it. Thank you.
And we're, no action on this item tonight, but we will ask you to take action next week as we start the school year, get our employees paid.
All right, Ms. Davis, review and discuss Waco ISD's general fund budget. So you, sorry.
I'm ESSER. She has.
Oh, she's ESSER. I just skipped it.
Yeah.
I'm sorry.
That's okay.
My apologies. Review, discuss, take action regarding proposed use of ESSER funding to provide retention bonuses. That is a really important one.
Yes, it's very important. And I'm excited to share this.
I'm so sorry. To provide retention bonuses for classroom teachers and hard-to-fill positions. Dr. Gutierrez.
So this evening, I also want to present to you the retention bonuses that are presented in the board packet for teachers and a couple of hard-to-fill positions, which is cafeteria workers and our custodians. As you know, teacher retention's been a huge challenge for us here in Waco for many years. In 2019, our taper showed that we had a 26% turnover. And we, and last year, we know we saw a reduction in that turnover due to COVID and we project that to be at 17%, although the taper hasn't, you know, it's, that will finalize that number. But this year, it has gone back up and it looks like it'll be around 21% for this year. So we're still sitting a little lower than we have in the previous three years, not counting last year. So we're happy about that, but we want it to be below the state average. And the state average is at 16%. So we all know the importance of retaining teachers due to the impact this has on student learning. And we're all feeling the hardship of replacing teachers. This has been, I've been in education for 26 years and this has been one of the hardest years to find teachers. And we're not alone in that, all the districts. I mean, I was with, I was at a conference today with human resource leaders and everyone is feeling this pinch. I mean, I've heard numbers as high as 200, you know, just can't find the teachers. And in addition to this retention bonus, teacher retention bonus, we've also, like I mentioned to you, have a hard time staffing and keeping cafeteria workers and custodians. Last year, we had anywhere from 35 to 40 cafeteria vacancies at any given time. And this is one of the things I would lose sleep over, to be honest with you. But we managed because we have employees who step up. They take on extra shifts, they work, they work additional hours. We also had fewer students in our schools for in-person learning. So all of those things helped us manage this situation. And we, and as far as custodians are concerned, we generally have about a dozen custodians. And again, they're taking on extra shifts and I know they're getting very tired, but they're very gracious because they know the importance of this frontline work that they do. And as you know, the market right now, everyone's feeling the pinch. Restaurants, retail, I mean, it's hard to find employees right now. So we're competing against all of, all of those two. So let me tell you a little bit about the teacher retention bonus. Again, it's in your packet, but just a quick preview. We're proposing that it would consist of three payouts for teachers who start with us this summer. So if they start with, if they're with us August of 2021, they'll get three payouts over four years for $10,000. If they start with us next summer in 2022, they would be eligible for two payouts for up to $5,000, so two $2,500 payouts. And then if they start with us in 2023 and stay with us a couple of years, they'll be eligible for one payout, $2,500. Our cafeteria workers and custodians won't be set up in cohorts like that. If they start with us this, if they're with us in August, we're going to pay them by experience. So if they've already been with us for 10 years or more, they're going to get three payouts of $1,000 for a total of $3,000. If they've been with us five to nine years, they'll be eligible for three payouts of $750 for a total of $2,250. And if they have been with us zero to four years, if they're just starting with us or up to four years, they'll get three payouts of $500 for a total of $1,500. The cost of these, the teacher retention bonus is $8.1 million. And we plan to use ESSER funds, ESSER II and III funds. And, and the retention bonuses for our auxiliary staff that I mentioned to you tonight is $500,500. So tonight, I do ask that you approve the retention bonuses as presented, but I'm, I'm happy to answer any questions. I do want to make one more comment. We wish we could have added a lot of, we appreciate all our employees and we wish we could have included a lot of other positions here. However, these are the three areas that we've just been dealing with a lot of turnover and just hard-to-staff positions. So any questions?
Any questions?
I'd just say this is a really significant bonus, $10,000. We want our teachers to stay with us. It means a lot to us to have our, the stability for our kids. And we're excited to bring this forward to the board.
I think it's, it does say a lot that not only do we value our teachers, but we need them to stay with us. And we're silver lining of all of this is that we have the funds to implement the program. And I hear what you're saying. I think it's not to say all of our employees aren't important. And certainly, our administrators have had an exhausting year like none other. But what I hear you saying is that, that it's their teacher vacancies that are most dire and those are the people on the front lines with our kids every day. Did, had, did you look at the numbers of providing an incentive bonus to other classes of employees and what those costs would be?
We did not. These were, these three were considered because, because of the turnover rates of these employees and the, and our, the challenge we face in filling these positions. And so that's why these three rose to the, to this level of considering a retention bonus.
And to talk about it though, and we, we didn't have the capacity to go further into ESSER funding for these bonuses without cutting the teacher bonus down. And so if we would have done other groups based on our plans for ESSER, with everything we had already planned, we would have had to cut out some of the work that we want to do or scale back what we're giving our teachers for bonuses. And we felt like we really, a $10,000 bonus would really make a difference for our teachers and, and might really help us retain them. So we wanted it to be pretty hefty.
How many vacancies do we have right now?
Teaching vacancies? Seventy-five.
Seventy-five. So a lot of work to be done and maybe this will help, hopefully.
Yes, hopefully.
So you have to be employed by what date? August 1?
You start the school year with us.
Starting the school year with the district.
So depending on when your work calendar begins.
Okay. Anybody else have a question? Okay. Well, I'll entertain a motion.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the retention bonuses for classroom teachers and hard-to-fill positions as presented.
Thank you, Mr. Vedanya. Thank you, Mr. Sykes. Is there any further discussion? Okay, ready to vote? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Now, Ms. Davis. I was just so excited about the general fund budgets presentation. I couldn't wait. Sorry.
Yeah, because she's serious. Okay, so we're going to update a little bit on the current year where it looks like we're going to end up, if we still know. I mean, that's been a moving target all year. Talk about the hold harmless amount and how that's going to impact our ESSER II funds, at least as far as we know right now. We will not get final numbers on that until settle up in September, which will be September 25. Of course, you know, as usual, we find out months after the school year ends what our revenue was for the year. But, so we'll look at that and then we'll look at the preliminary budget for 2021-22. So this is, we've been talking about our enrollment and our average daily attendance and how that has looked. The numbers that I will show for, say, 2019-20 and 2020-21 are what we are actually going to end up with. As we know, last year, the ESSER I funds were used to, as a whole, to cover hold harmless that the state gave us last year. And so our attendance, we, was 13,354. That's what we actually ended up with for 1920. I show a little arrow downward because they actually drew our attendance down to lower our state funding, so we, and pay it out of ESSER. So if you look at our summary of finances online, it's going to show that lower number, but that is not actually what our attendance ended up being last year. So last year ended up being 13,354. We had budgeted 13,257. So for 2021, we ended up, we had budgeted 13,241, bringing it down somewhat from the 13,354. We brought it down to about 110 students. But our ADA PEEMS summer submission, this is our first submission, not our final submission, and you can see that bottom line down there was 12,926. So that is 315 students less than what we had used for budget purposes this past year. And now this is subject to the hold harmless that TEA is providing for this year. And we'll look at that on, this is the rules. We've been over this before. We talked about what we had to do to be able to be eligible for hold harmless for the entire year. We are eligible for hold harmless for the entire year. So we're going to get that target ADA that TEA promised us, sort of get it, not really, for all six weeks, all six, six weeks. So this is what that looks like. We had, the first two, six weeks, you see, is how we calculated that original budget, the 13,241. During the school year, we were getting numbers from our attendance accounting system and that's what you see in that, that second column. And it was through the fourth, six weeks, and I had projected out for the last two, six weeks. And it looked like it was going to end up just under 12,000. What you see in the third column is what we submitted for PEEMS for the first submission. So in every case, almost every six weeks, that's about 1,000 students more than what we were looking at earlier in the year with PEEMS cleanup and capturing attendance in the district. So that number ended up being that 12,926 that we showed on that previous page. Now, the last column is what TEA is going to give us. Now, the last column is what T E A is going to give us in ADA for hold harmless. Now, this factor that they have calculated, that calculates this 13,537 in ADA is actually applied to all of our allotments, special ed, career and technology, any of those that are based on attendance. Now, our comp ed allotment is not based on attendance, it's based on student counts, as is dyslexia and some of the others. But any of those based on F T Es or ADA will be applied, the same percentage will be applied to those. This means that there is a basic allotment funding difference of about $3.8 million between what we would generate just on our ADA and what we generate with T E A's hold harmless. However, in some of these numbers, we actually had much higher counts this year in special education, because we've identified a lot more students, and in career and technology. So we're going to lose those because the hold harmless is all or nothing. So we won't get that special ed funding or the career and technology funding. So we actually will generate just about 2.9 million in hold harmless. So this is kind of what it then looks like for the year. And this is with, because of the way the hold harmless is going to work, the money's going to come in through the S R funds and not through the general fund. So it looks like this is what we're going to end up the year. Again, this is just projections as of the end of May, because I didn't have June numbers yet. But it looks like we will be drawing down, if you look into the middle three columns, that's the 2021 school year. We adopted a budget, if you look under the adopted budget column and go down about two-thirds of the way down the page, we adopted a budget that had a $5.2 million deficit. And that was primarily because we had an extra 10 days of instruction because of our late calendar start in this past year. So we did adopt a budget with a deficit. Since then, we had funded a number of projects, including the Paul Tyson Stadium, which is about $9 million. And so as it looks like right now with all of our under expenditures in various categories, we're going to draw down the fund balance about nine and a half million, which is about equivalent of the Paul Tyson project, a little bit more. So we basically have, at least it looks like at this point, we will save what we had budgeted as a deficit at the beginning of the year. And we had a lot of savings in areas we did not expect, like substitute costs. We weren't using substitute because of the remote learning and all. And we saved a lot of money in extra duty pay and some of those things we would normally have with face-to-face instruction. So there's a lot of savings in those categories. With that, we will have an ending unassigned fund balance of about 29.6 million, which is about 17.4% of our expenditures. Again, I put that note over there without the hold harmless impact of the 2.9 million, because that's going to come in through federal funds. On the next page, this is kind of what we've had in additional revenues, and this is another, some of the other things that, that helped us overcome that $5 million deficit. We had two insurance claims for $800,000 and $630,000 that, for the hail damage and the winter storm damage that have come in. We also were able to recover through some of the emergency management money, about $256,000 worth of expenditures. This was mostly for personal protective equipment and those types of things, sanitation of campuses and those, those activities. Then in our special revenue funds, we have recovered, these, these were originally charged to the general fund, and so they've now been moved to special revenue funds. So that's helped with that deficit as well. $591,000 in that bulk purchase program that we did through C R F. We have another $688,000 that's supposed to be coming this month. I email them every few weeks and I'm like, where's our money? And they said, it's still under review. There's two purchase orders, still under review, but hopefully it'll be there this month, but I'll be looking for it on the 25th. And then the S R one, the amount we received in excess of our foundation school program, we've received another $401,000. So that's about 3.4 million that helped the general fund situation during this current So this is, again, we kind of talked about this a little bit, but I wanted to kind of show how this is going to work. Now, that 2.9 million, that's the hold harmless amount for a general fund, is going to be taken from S R two funding. And so I'm not quite sure, if that works like S R one, we can move expenditures from the general fund for this past year, and where we show that $9 million deficit right now, we can move about $3 million worth of expenditures to S R funds, and then that would bring that deficit down to, say, $6 million instead of $9. We could not move it, and we could then spend more of next year's, if we look into next year's budget, we could move some of those costs to S R funds in next year's budget. Now, one of the things that is good about the, all of the S R money right now is that there is no supplant issue with any of those funds. So we can actually go in, what typically Title I and most of our federal funds do not allow you to cover the cost of something that you've already been paying for in your general fund. So one of the things we are looking at, because our dyslexia allotment doesn't cover all of our dyslexia teachers, another million and a half dollars worth of dyslexia teachers that we could fund here for a year or two, and then that would help out our general fund. But normally, we wouldn't be able to do that because we were already buying those teachers. But because S R does not have that supplant restriction, we can do that with these funds. So that's one of the things we'll be looking at over the next few months and see what we want to move over there and when we want to move it. It might be a good idea to go ahead and do it this year, because if we do have a bond election and we're going to the rating agencies, the higher we have our general fund fund balance, the better off we would be. So it might be something we want to go ahead and do. And as Dr. Kinkanen said, we have now heard that we will get that 33 million distributed in the S R three money. So, and, and I just announced it right there, this is the, the finally accepted T E As or Texas's plan, so that money will be coming very shortly. Okay, so this is getting into next year. And looking at what our enrollment and average daily attendance, I have been, we looked at an enrollment, our projection on our templates that we use, we're projecting a 14,783 enrollment for P E Ms. That's very close to what it was in 2019-20, much higher than that drop that we had in 2021. And there was a lot of pre-K students in the 2021 numbers that we had a huge decrease there. Most of our decrease in enrollment was actually in pre-K and kender. So looking at that, that's very close to our demographer's number. Our demographer was projecting 14,825 for 21-22, so this is about 42 students less than what the demographer was showing. I'm using the slightly lower attendance rate, not a lot. I'm using the 89.8, that's the same attendance rate we had for this year. Normally, it runs in the, just over 90%. And that would give us, the ADA that we're utilizing right now to calculate our state revenue is 13,261, which is up 335 from what it was for summer P E Ms. This is what it looks like right now. Now, this is still early. We're still working some of these numbers through. But our total, total fund balance, this is an unassigned fund balance, this is total fund balance, at the beginning of the year was 36.8. We are looking at, or we're projecting it to be at the beginning of the year at 36.8. We're looking at revenues of 162.7 million, and then our base budget was 163.1. We had a required special education increase that we had to do to meet maintenance of effort under federal law of 541,000, went primarily to staffing. And then we have some benefit rate increases built in right now. Group health, I have 400, and so when we get to some of these numbers, they may not match some of what Josie gave you, because Josie's looking at all, all funding sources. A lot of those costs she was looking at are coming from S R funds, as well as, you know, the food service fund and other funds. These are just general fund numbers here. Group health, a $412,000. Teacher retirement, this is legislated. We don't have a choice on the teacher's retirement. It's going up. The district's contribution is going up from 7.5 to 7.75 next year. Members, our employees' contribution is also going up. And then we have another contribution that we make because we don't participate in Medicare, and that is going up from 1.6% to 1.7% next year. The impact on the general fund of those increases is going to be about $401,000. Unemployment, our unemployment quadrupled this past year from what it normally is. It usually runs about $50,000 a year. It was over $200,000 a year. And that is after federal stimulus funds reduced it by half. Because starting last March, or middle of March, the federal stimulus fund started paying for half of the unemployment. So we have a little bit of money in the quarter ending March, and then in June, July, or June, September, December, and again, this March, they've paid half of our unemployment claims. I'm not quite sure how long that is going to last and when our claims might be coming down, but so far, they haven't really come down. So I went ahead and I'm budgeting for that increase in unemployment for next year, and that's 137, 138,000 for the general fund. And then the salary increase of 3% of 2.8 million, again, that's the general fund increase. That is probably a little on the low side because of some of the adjustments for the auxiliary people, but I'm going to be looking at that, and a lot of them will go into food service anyway. Then I budget salary savings, depending on the employee group. And I look at the history of what the savings are. Of course, those savings have been real high with custodians and food service workers and some of our other areas, because we've just had so many vacancies and they've been hard to fill. So I actually look at each employee group and I estimate the savings based on what it's historically been for the last couple of years. So right now, in the budget, I have about 1.6 million built in for salary savings. And I will continue to look at that as we, as we clean up all of our personnel costs over the next couple of weeks. So that gives us a budget of 165.9 million. We have other resources and uses. This 300,000, I think this is a little bit low, too. I'm going to have to increase that a bit. This is primarily our Greater Waco Advanced Academies, Guam and Guaca. The tuition has never paid for those programs that we get from the other districts, and so we always have to transfer some money at the end of the year. As I said, I thought that was going to be about 300,000, but as we're finalizing some of these other numbers and some of the impact there, it looks like that's going to be closer to half a million dollars. That gives us expenditures and uses over revenues and resources of about 3.5 million dollars, better than last year. Last year was about 5.5, this year's about 3.5. So, you know, we've made up about 2 million of that, but again, last year, most of that was due to the fact that we had the extra 10 days for teachers. Gives us a total fund, ending fund balance of 33.3 million, and about, that's about 20% of expenditures. And that is kind of what we have in policy as our low amount for fund balance. We have some additional requests right now in the, that have been submitted for budget. There's about 367,000. We'll be looking at those in the next couple of weeks. 367,000 is more recurring cost increases. We have some one-time requests that, once we fund them, we won't have them recurring in the following year. A bus camera system, our bus cameras, I think we purchased maybe in 2008. So they're quite old and we're looking at maybe replacing that system. A new student and finance system of 600,000, software upgrades and just increases in pricing of 78,000. Vehicles, primarily police vehicles of 262,000, and then some video production equipment of $12,000. And again, we're going to be looking at those over the next week or so. This is kind of the schedule that we look at for tax rate. When I was talking to Mr. Bobbitt today, he's going to actually get me those preliminary numbers. First, it was going to be Monday, but he thinks he can get me some tomorrow, which will give us a little bit more time to work on them. Not sure when we're going to work on them, but gives us a little more time. And he says he thinks he's already at 95%, which is a certifiable amount. So I think we'll have some good numbers to look at. Once we get those numbers, they've got to go through a process of calculating some rates for us. We have to send those to T E A, and they, this is a new, this was new in the last year, where they set this maximum compressed rate for us. They have to check that and set it. And so they have a deadline of August 5th to get that rate back to us. We have a template to calculate it by, and it wasn't changed last year by T E A, and I feel confident that the number we've been using will be fine for this year as well. Now, with one caveat, the legislature is in a special session right now, and because Comptroller Hager certified a higher revenue, more money available, one of the bills that's maybe going to come out of the legislature will be further compression of the tax rate and further tax savings for our taxpayers. So if that happens, then there will probably, you know, I'm hoping it doesn't happen this later date for this year, but there may be some change there. It won't change our overall revenue, because what will happen is it'll lower our local revenue that we get from taxpayers, but it'll increase our state revenue. And so it, for us, it doesn't have a lot of impact on our total revenue number, but it would save our taxpayers' number, money. And then we have, to August 31st is our last day to post our notice of our meeting to discuss the budget and the proposed tax rate. We plan to do, to present that on August 12th, and it'll probably be posted on the 13th or 14th. And then August 31st is our deadline to adopt the budget. We are planning to do that at the August 26th, this board meeting. So that will be done in, prior to August 31st. And then September 30th is the last day to, for the 60 days after the certified appraisal roll to adopt a tax rate, but we also plan to adopt that tax rate on the 26th. Now, there's a couple of things in this budget right now that might make it look a little bit better, because it doesn't look real great right now. One of the things that we can do with these S R funds, because they are, they're, they don't have that supplant criteria restriction in there, is we also, we don't get the restricted indirect cost rate. We get the unrestricted indirect cost rate on those programs. The, our restricted rate runs somewhere between 3 and 4% that we can take off of those funds, put it into our general fund, and use it for any purpose. Our unrestricted rate is 10.75%, which means of that $70 million over the next three years, we could pull back $7 million into our general fund and use it however we want to, and it won't be subject to the federal fund restrictions. So that is something we have put in our grant applications that we're going to take the full indirect cost, and that will help us with anything that might not qualify under S R. That, those numbers have not been built into our revenue yet for the general fund, so if we spend 15 million, you know, that's a million and a half. So, if we spend 15 million, you know, that's a million and a half that comes back. We get 20 or 30 million, you know, 2 to 3 million dollars comes back. So, those could help out that general fund picture as well.
Yes, Mr. Sykes.
Thank you, Madam President. Cheryl, on the, so, you identified the projected actual on fund balances, 17.4, just, what, 29.6 million dollars coming up to about 20% for 21-22?
Right.
And I think you just answered my question. There's, you know, some things happening on funds that will help relieve, you know, fund balance. But, my question is, do you see any, any additional pressure on committed funds or restricted funds that will need to be allocated?
Well, one of the things we do not have built into this budget right now, and we usually come back in after we kind of know where we ended the year, in September, we'll look at maintenance projects and buses.
Right.
Because we have no bus replacement, we didn't do any bus replacement this past year, so there may be some of that that we're going to want to come back in. Now, the biggest driver usually on those maintenance projects, I think we did about 2.5 million this past year, and a million of that was HVAC projects. Now, HVAC projects, we can't, we are going to fund under ESER. So, that'll take about a million dollars out of that number that we typically do for projects. But, yes, that's something else we're going to have to look at as well.
And you answered my question, but that was specifically, kind of, and you answered it, about the bus rotation and, you know, getting our replacement rotation in, and we got sidetracked, I guess, last year a little bit, so there may be some catch-up at some point in time that we're going to have to address, but...
We got a good number of buses, brand-new buses this last year.
We did, because they were from the year, the purchase from the year before didn't come in until the fall, so, but we should be buying about seven a year to keep up with a replacement schedule.
Right. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions from Ms. Davis? No, okay, thank you.
When did that come?
It was. Yeah, it was, good to leave it to almost the last best friend, except for announcements. Mr. DeBeere.
The first is that the application is open for a second round of the pandemic electronic benefit transfer, P E B T. If you recall from the last time this happened, this is a benefit that's intended to support families that would have been receiving meals for children through the Free School Meal Program. Because Waco ISD is eligible under the community eligibility provision, it means that all of our students receive free meals, whether or not they apply for free and reduced meals. And as a result, all of our families are eligible for that pandemic electronic benefit transfer. To apply for it, our families can go to yourTexasBenefits.com/learn/PEBT, or maybe easier, just Google "Texas P E B T." But, that application has to be submitted before August 13th. Coming up on July 22nd, the Central Texas Food Bank will be doing another distribution at our stadium, starting at 10:00 a.m. that day. And finally, on certainly a high note this evening, Lion Pride runs deep, but it runs particularly deep when we have a former lion headed to the Olympics in Tokyo. As I'm sure many of you know, Will London III made the relay pool for the 4x400 and is headed to Tokyo. The track and field events, including the 4x400 mixed relay, start on July 30th. We're excited to watch and cheer Will on, and we're also excited to celebrate his incredible legacy of success already later this year. So, thank you.
I'm Mike Quazza. Good night.